We called a order, the meeting of the Johnson County Planning Commission for November 16th, 2021. My name is Chris Eilof. I'm the chairman. I would remind everyone when they speak tonight to please state your name so that the record will be clear when it's transcribed. The, Leslie, do you have a statement to read?
I do. You ready?
Yes.
All right, this meeting is now being recorded. Please silence all electronic devices. Please note, to reduce the spread of COVID-19, physical distancing will be observed in the hearing room with limited seating. Some board members will not be physically present in the board meeting room and will be joining through Zoom. If you are using Zoom, you may participate in the meeting using your computer, phone, or electronic device. Zoom participants chat will be disabled once the meeting begins. If you have trouble with Zoom, please call 913-715-1700. If you would like to speak but did not register beforehand, please use the raise hand function or star nine if connecting via telephone. I will call your name when it is your turn to speak. Registered speakers using Zoom will be called upon to speak in the order in which they signed up, alternating with in-person speakers. Speakers who have registered or signed up for in-person public comment by 5:40 PM will be called on in the order in which they signed up. The chairman may modify these procedures as needed to conduct an orderly and efficient meeting. All speakers will be limited to two minutes unless the chair designates a different time period in order to accommodate all speakers desiring to speak. When your name is called by the moderator, your microphone will be unmuted. Please state your name and address for the record, followed by your comments. If you share concerns, comments, or points made by others, please refrain from repeating those comments. And instead, note for the record that you agree with the previous individual's comments. There will be a 10-second remaining warning sound. Board members and presenters, please state your name every time you begin talking, so the notes can be transcribed for the record. This is a public hearing. We are presenting live and recording the meeting. Thank you. I will go ahead and do the roll call now. Michael Levin.
Here.
Mark Huggins.
Here.
Randy Hutchins is not here. George Lund.
Here.
Jim Neese.
Present.
Chris Eilif.
Here.
Dave Johns.
Here.
Kelly Rast.
Present.
Roger Mason is not here. Lindsay Gressay. Not here as well, and she is also not on Zoom. Randall Downing.
Here.
And that is all. Thank you.
All right, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the, is the approval of the agenda. Any objections to the approval of the agenda? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, this is for the board's approval. Sir, you have a chance to be silent, or you have a chance to be removed? I don't wish to do anything other than run the meeting. Are there any objections to the agenda? Hearing no objections to the agenda will be approved as printed. Next item on the agenda is consideration of the minutes of the previous planning commission meeting. Sir, you're interrupting the meeting. Deputy, I would ask that you please remove him if you could. Meeting. The September 28th meeting minutes have been presented to us as corrected. We'll wait just for a moment until this ruckus can be reduced. Let me say before we move on to the next item on the agenda, one of the things that has been really good about these meetings is the level of civility that we have seen both from the members of the public and from the commissioners and everyone else, and I really appreciate it. It does make it possible to conduct public business, and otherwise, we would not be able to. Who can't? I'm sorry, what's the problem? I'll move closer to the microphone. Sure. All right. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the September 28th, 2021, meetings that have been corrected. Is there anyone that has any recommendations for, or objections to, or changes for those minutes? All those in favor of approval as printed indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Next item on the agenda is with the consideration of the minutes is the October 12th, 2021, meeting minutes. And is there anyone who, again, would like to make any recommendations for changes or objections to those minutes? If not, all those indicate that their approval of the minutes as printed indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone disapproving, same sign. Lastly, the minutes of the October 26th, 2021, meeting. And I would ask again, is there anyone who has any objections to or changes, recommended changes for the minutes of October 26th indicate by saying aye? Or, well, pardon me. Anyone who has any objections, please make them known. Hearing none, then all those who are in favor of approval of those minutes, please indicate by saying, by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. All right, the minutes of all three meetings are now approved. We're going to move on now to the public hearing with regard to the update of the comprehensive plan and zoning regulations to regulate utility scale solar facilities. At this point, I'm going to recuse myself from voting or further commenting on these items or chairing the meeting as I may have a potential conflict of interest. I spoke also with Vice Chairman Randy Hutchins before coming here today. He regrets his inability to be here, but he also is recusing himself as a result of a possible conflict of interest. So I'm going to turn the meeting over now to the person with the most seniority on this board, Mr. Jim Neese.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, this Kelly Rast, I have a question, Mr. Neese, or do you want to go first, or can I ask a question?
Let's.
You want to go first?
What I'd like to do is have the staff make their presentation.
Okay, perfect.
At the end of the staff's presentation, and what we do is, this is Jim Neese, by the way. Then we'll have the staff finish their completion. If we have any discussion they want to bring up, in the meantime, we'll do it then.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Jay, if you would proceed with your presentation, and I believe it involves you and the consultants.
Thank you, Mr. Neese. Jay Leipzig, Planning Director. And just as a point of additional clarification, the, Mr. Neese is chairing the meeting tonight because he's the most tenured member of our, of our planning commission. I believe it's something like 38 years, or might even be longer than that, but it's been a long time. So, Mr. Neese will be the, the acting chair for the, the meeting this evening. As, as I have done in previous meetings, I wanted to give a quick update on communications that have been received and included in the packet. And in the packet, that was, that was hand-delivered, the planning commission members on, remember the 10th, there's communication from Richard and Donna Gall, also from Bill Tillman. Those are both included in the packet. There was additional communication that was emailed. This would be communication that was received from November 10th through November 15th. And we have communication from Emily Trubner, Byron Wiley, Marvin Kenoke, George Schlegel, Lee Ann Antis, Ty Gorman, Ray Antis, Kerry Brandon, and Joyce Whittier. So I apologize if I have mispronounced any of those names, but that's the additional communication we received. So I did want to begin the staff presentation this evening. This, this is a public hearing. Staff will be summarizing our, our previous discussions that we had at our, at our last meeting on October 26th and, and, and presenting the recommendations to you, along with our, our planning consultant. Darren Coffey from the Berkeley Group is also available by Zoom this evening. And Sean Penley, our deputy director, will also be participating in the, in the presentation this evening. So with that being said, I'll, I'll start with the first slide that provides a summary to you, kind of where we are. We did have, this started this process, our planning commission and Board of County Commission study session on March the 11th, 2021. We reviewed the draft comp plan and zoning regulations for the planning commission on August the 10th, 2021. And then we've had a series of study sessions since that time. We've had two in September, September 14th and 28th, as well as two in October, on October 12th and 26th. And then, of course, this evening is the public hearing, November 16th. We had preliminarily, preliminarily scheduled a, a study, study session with the Board of County Commissioners for December 16th. That has been moved back to January 6th. Just so you all are aware of that date, that is a move back to January 6th. So I wanted to make that statement, kind of provides a summary of where we are at this point. But with that, I'm going to turn it over to Sean Penley, who's going to go through the, the remaining slides with you.
Thank you, Jay. Good evening, Commissioner Sean Penley, Deputy Director of Planning. This evening, we would like to give a presentation and overview of the proposed amendments to the county's rural comprehensive plan and zoning regulations that will establish the standards and regulations for utility scale solar facilities. We'll highlight a couple of the key elements. You have seen these before, as we have discussed in some of the study sessions, but we want to highlight some of the draft, the key draft regulations and some of the recent changes that were recommended by the planning commission, as well as staff. Staff will provide the introduction here, go through these first few slides, then we'll turn it over to Darren Coffey with the Berkeley Group, who's been our independent consultant, assisting staff drafting the regulations, and he'll go through the detailed development standards and regulations. Following this presentation, we'll turn it back over to the commission for discussion and to open the public hearing. So as we have discussed, one of the first things we need to do to address is the comprehensive plan policies. There are some specific things that we want to look at for the policies, the conference plan, as we have discussed. The majority of land in the unincorporated area is zoned R U R, rural district, and they're primarily agricultural uses and very low-density residential uses. The policies that are being added to the rural comprehensive plan will uphold the rural character and limit grading and disturbance of those rural areas. We are including policies to protect land areas from future growth and development, particularly within one and a half miles of city limits. Other areas that were to be protected and identified in our conference plan will be residential areas, parks and public amenities, and environmentally sensitive areas. So the, the, the beginning that we're talking about for the regulations, what we're doing, the, the purpose of the, these amendments to the zoning regulations will be to establish development standards and application requirements for utility scale solar facilities. There is no application submitted at this time for any application, but following the regulations that are adopted, we will discuss the proposed solar facility requirements, and they will require a conditional use permit application. And that will include a separate process for staff review and public notice and public hearing. So what we're discussing tonight, it'll be the regulations that we'll get into. But any actual application for a utility scale solar facility will require a separate process that will be presented to the zoning board and Board of County Commissioners. So the, the slide here that I'm showing is some of the, the key elements of the development standards that we'll talk about. Due to the large size and scale of solar facilities and potential impacts on surrounding properties and, and the surrounding area, the, there's a variety of development standards that need to be considered for the regulations. A few of these are identified here, as I'm showing in this graphic. Obviously setbacks from property lines and dwellings, landscaping, screening requirements, stream buffers and flood plans, fencing, wildlife corridors, and, and others. And those are just some of the things that we're considering, obviously wherever the, the solar panels and the equipment are presented and eventually will be required to provide detailed plans, and we have standards that we're setting out for all of these requirements. And Darren Coffey will go through some of those detailed development standards in a moment. So we'll go through some of the key elements that we discussed over the last few study sessions. If you recall, one of the key elements, one of the key requirements was the term of the conditional use permit. These facilities will require conditional use permit. Staff had originally recommended a 20-year term, and at the last planning commission meeting, the majority of the commissioners recommended a longer term of 25 years. And staff has revised those draft regulations according, accordingly. So those are included in your packet with most recent update. Staff has recommended the 25-year term based on the previous discussion. The maximum project area for any one conditional use permit would be 2,000 acres. And that has not changed. That's the same standard that was presented in the previous draft, and that, nothing has changed in regard to that. There is another standard for maximum project extent. This is basically what is defined as the overall project boundary, and that is up to four square miles and 25, 2,560 acres. Staff has recommended a waiver option for this requirement, as noted in the draft regulations. I'll explain that in a minute. So the following are, is a graphic that is showing the difference between the project area and the project extent. The project area is essentially the total boundary area. This includes all area that's within a development plan and a conditional use permit. It may consist of multiple partial, parcels or portions of existing parcels. The parcels may be contiguous or non-contiguous. But the standards that we're setting forth are for a maximum area of all those properties within the project area to be 2,000 acres as a maximum. And no portion of the project area shall be located more than a half a mile from any other property within the project area. So it is somewhat defined. There is another definition we've, we've included for project extent that essentially gets at that requirement also to confine it so that it doesn't proliferate and extend farther than what would be expected. This is basically a geographical extent for the solar facility, anyone's solar facility. Staff has revised the definition in the draft regulations to simplify and kind of clarify the, the definition is really the area with the smallest rectangle that encompasses the entire project area in its entirety. So if you see on this graphic here, there's a yellow outline that may be difficult to see, but basically it just squares off the entire area that's anyone proposed project area. Again, the limit is for four square miles. Staff is recommending a waiver for that requirement. The reason for that is it, it can extend a little bit further, and as this graphic shows here, it could potentially be more than four square miles. But staff included waiver language in the updated draft regulations to specify that there are some conditions with this waiver. If an applicant is to request a waiver, the applicant must submit written information for the waiver, and there must be a finding by the Board of County Commissioners that the proposed use is in keeping with or does not conflict with the planned uses for the area. The distance between non-abutting tracks does not exceed one-half mile of distance, and the deviation from the maximum project extent does not create adverse impacts on adjoining properties. So essentially, they're still going to follow the same standards as far as a maximum area. It cannot exceed 2,000 acres in total project size, but the, but the project extent, this boundary line may go a little bit more than the four square miles as defined in the, in the draft, draft regulations. So staff would be happy to answer any specific questions on that, but basically it's just an option that the applicant could request a waiver if they felt necessary. As we discussed previously, the location of utility scale solar facilities is the single most important factor in evaluating an application. And as we have discussed, we're, have recommendations for the maximum percentage of coverage area for any one project, that's 70%. And we've included a graphic here that we discussed for these, the buffer maps, which I'll explain next. The, the, the buffers that we're recommending, initially it was one mile, if you recall, and the last two study sessions, staff would recommend increasing that to one and a half miles to, to respond to some of the cities' comments and to take into account cities' future growth area. So staff recommended increasing that to one and 1.5 miles from the city limits. A waiver is available for that too, as it was previously, that has not changed. And if, again, if, one thing that did change that staff added in was a, a requirement that if, to address some of the cities' concerns, if an applicant does request a waiver from that requirement from the one and a half mile distance, staff noted that the applicant would be required to send written notice to the cities for their request for the waiver. And any comments received from the cities will be included for consideration by the zoning board and the Board of County Commissioners. Essentially puts the onus on the applicant to explain why a waiver would be requested. And then that, the cities are, have their opportunity to provide comments, and of course, there will be public hearings to that effect.
Jim Neese, I've got a quick question. If they come before a zoning board and ask for a waiver, they could be granted a waiver, right? So why would you put, why would you put these waivers in, why would you write, already write the waivers possibilities in there? If they're going to come before the zoning board and want something other than standard, then they're going to ask for a waiver, which may or may not be granted. So if you have a waiver written in there, and they ask for the waiver, they're still going to have to be granted by the zoning board, I think. I'm right there. So my question then is, why have all these waivers? Because they could ask for waivers when they, they want to make a waiver to the zoning board.
Not all of our development standards include waivers, so we'll highlight those that do. The reason why staff recommended a waiver for this requirement, for the distance from cities, there could conceivably be an application for a utility scale solar facility that a city may support. Maybe it's in, in support of a industrial development for the intermodal, or maybe it's for another project that would be allowed. If we don't include language for a waiver option, it's not an option. So essentially, there, there would be stuck at one and a half miles from all cities regardless of whether the city wants it or not. We understand that there may be some opposition to the waiver, but we have to have allowance for it if the, if the board wants to entertain that, right? So we're just including language for that waiver, and there are conditions and justification that we have to provide, the applicant would have to provide that justification. And you're, you're correct, the zoning board and the Board of County Commissioners would review that request for a waiver and could recommend approval or denial of that waiver. So it doesn't have to be granted just because an applicant requests it. It, it could be denied, and, and staff may not support it as well. If we know, let's say if a city has submitted comments that are in, that are opposed to that request for waiver, chances are county staff would say, we, we don't recommend approval of that waiver. And so the board would have the ultimate decision to make to whether or not they support the waiver. So happy to answer any other questions as we go. If you think of anything else, feel free to, I forgot to mention, feel free to ask questions as we go along. One of the other distance requirements is from other solar facilities. So if a, a facility is approved, there's a minimum distance of separation of at least two miles from another facility. So if one is approved, there could be no other utility scale solar facilities permitted within two miles of that facility. With that, that concludes the staff's introductions, the presentations. I'll turn it over to Darren Coffey now. He'll go through these next seven or eight slides, and then staff will come back and wrap it up with final discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Pendley. I appreciate that. As Sean said, the single most important factor is the location of these facilities. But once a location has been picked, setbacks is another really big one. And what staff is recommending is that setbacks from structures be at least 50 feet from the project boundary. And I will say that, that is a very reasonable setback requirement, especially for facilities as large as we're dealing with. Every, every use typically has a setback, and the bigger the use, the bigger the setback you're going to want. So 50 feet, in my opinion, is extremely reasonable. Now, with substations and battery energy storage facilities, there's the potential for more hazard there. And so the setback is at least 150 feet from the project boundary. So we're trying to encourage the industry to design these facilities with these minimums in mind and encourage them to, to exceed the minimums where possible, as the project allows. Also, the minimum setback to existing dwellings should be 250 feet. Again, you, you may hear people say, look, why should we have to stay that far away if the neighbor doesn't care? Well, how many neighbors are there going to be in a 20 to 40-year period? And if we really want to protect the property values of adjacent property owners, then we want to do the setbacks correctly. Another factor is the screening. Just because you set it back doesn't mean you can't see it, but it does give an opportunity for you to put in appropriate screening. The visual impact of utility scale solar facilities can be significantly minimized with effective buffering and screening. And, you know, we've heard some people say that they don't mind looking at it from the road. They don't mind looking at it from their house, but I can tell you, a lot of people, and we may hear from some this evening, do mind. And what I say all the time is, if you can't see it, then maybe it's not an issue. Buffering and screening may be appropriate along any public right-of-way, when the site is adjacent to another land use, particularly residential. Vegetative buffers tend to be more appropriate in agricultural area rather than fencing and berms. And of course, it depends on the site, whether it's sloping up or sloping down, or, you know, has hills, et cetera. It also can be done by a variety of means, vegetative, evergreen, deciduous, a combination of fencing and berms and landscaping, you know, whatever is appropriate to the area. Also, with existing dwellings within 300 feet, the staff is recommending that it be 100% visually screened. Again, just to go along with that same philosophy of if you can't see it, maybe it's not an issue, or certainly less of an issue. This figure shows a rendering of vegetation planted during project construction, and the projected growth after six years, typically you're going to see a mixture of plants that are specified to provide an effective screen. This is an example of, I would say, bad landscaping. Staff visited a site in Missouri. They took some pictures. You know, if, if this is going to be your landscaping, then probably you don't need to require landscaping. The screening recommended in this ordinance, in my opinion, is very reasonable, but it is significantly more robust than what is seen here, which is minimally effective, to say the least. Now this is what you want. When, when you have existing trees and existing open space, and developers like this too, you just plop the panels in. Nobody can see them. They're doing their job. They're in sun, you know, all day long, as long as the sun is shining. This is an example of a, of a really, really perfect kind of screening situation. Decommissioning is another very, very important component to these facilities. And no other land use have we, as practicing planners, run into something that we have to think about 40 years down the road. And how are we going to secure that and ensure that it's not going to end up being the taxpayers who have to clean up the site? And so the decommissioning and reclamation plan is going to specify how they're going to remove the equipment that's installed, how they're going to, essentially, you know, an industry term is restore the site to its previous condition, which is very difficult to do if it was forested, by the way, but, you know, replant trees, retil the land, et cetera. How they're going to dispose of the materials appropriately, and sometimes where. And then the proposed method for the security, is it going to be cash escrow, which it tends not to be? Or would it be a letter of credit or a surety bond? Also, there's a cost estimate by a professional engineer that should not include the salvage value, and it's recommended that the county have that estimate reviewed by a third-party consultant, a third-party engineering firm, just to review the methodology that went into it, the pricing, et cetera, to, to ensure that that cost estimate is realistic. So again, how do you get those funds? How do you, how do you collect the funds? Well, it really is up to the county attorney's office as to what would be an acceptable form of security. Typically, you're going to see a letter of credit or a surety bond. And it also should be recalculated every five years. Again, if you're holding $5 million now, maybe it costs $20 million to decommission in the future. Or it may cost Or it may cost $5 million now, it might not cost anything in the future because it can all be salvaged. But there's no guarantee to that. And the county's responsibility isn't to figure out what will that salvage value be? The county's responsibility is to say, we're going to do everything in our power to ensure that the taxpayers of Johnson County will never have to pay a dime to decommission one of these facilities. And so that five years just kind of helps recalibrate and make sure that the funds that are being held are sufficient. And if it is greater than a 2% value, then it would be adjusted. So money could be given back or released by the county, or money could be additionally corrected with the issuance of a new letter of credit or other security to replace the existing one. Now, there's a number of things that have been recommended by staff in terms of modifications based on the input that was received at the last study session. Staff really paid attention to what was being said. And Mr. Pendley is going to go over those items right now.
Thank you, Darren.
Sean.
Yep.
This sort of commissioned Jay Leipzig wanted to say just a couple of words before about something that I neglected to say during my initial comments. In the packet this evening is a memo that stated November 10th, 2021, from Sean and I, staff to the planning commission that summarizes the various conditions and the and the points that we're going through in the PowerPoint. And also in the packet is the draft solar facilities regulations that I just wanted to point that out. So if you if you want to look at the at the memo, all of that information is also backed up in the in the document subdivision regulations themselves as well. So I wanted to point that out just in case that was not not realized. Sorry.
Yeah, thank you, Jay. So I'll just wrap up the this presentation by staff here to just note, as Darren indicated, following the last planning commission meeting, some of those changes that were recommended by the commission were incorporated, such as the the term. But then also a few additional items that I wanted to point out. Staff has added draft development standards for medium scale solar facilities. These are facilities that are between one and 10 acres in size. They are still considered utility scale facility. They need to be addressed, though, where there are regulations included with this draft. And and just for the purposes of explaining what that will entail, they they will still require conditional use permit as drafted, and they'll follow the same standards as utility scale solar facilities with the following exceptions. Battery energy storage facilities are not allowed in those medium scale facilities. Visual impact studies, traffic studies, and environmental impact studies may be waived or modified because those are such smaller facilities. They may also be located within one and a half miles of any city and may be located within two miles of an existing solar facility. The thought being that they're smaller in scale could potentially be almost considered like an accessory to any industrial industrial development, but but because of the size, there are different standards that apply. Staff also added in some changes to allow for additional review time for conditional use permit application for solar facilities. These are going to be very large projects, require a lot of coordination and communications with different jurisdictions. We need to allow time for that and also a possibility of a third party review. So additional time may be required for the review of those applications as determined by the zoning administrator. Staff does recommend the waiver option, as we discussed, for the maximum project extent. And we have also added standards for public road improvements, repair and maintenance. That draft language is included along with an agreement that will be required, which the applicant would be required to submit. And then finally, we have, staff has recommended some revisions to the stormwater management plan requirements. These are minor, just basically to clarify that a stormwater management plan will be required with a condition whose permit application, and they will be subject to the then applicable standards for whatever effect at the time of the application. So those are all of the requirements that and the changes that staff has recommended. That concludes staff's presentation. We'd be happy to turn it back over to the commission for discussion and to open the public hearing.
Jim Nice, does anybody have any questions of staff at this time?
This is Kelly Rass. I have a question, but it's not necessarily on any of the presentation. Just bear with me for a second. I'm sort of thinking back with the new news of the recusal recusal of Chairman Eif and Commissioner Huggins. So how how is that work? Because last meeting, we basically voted on all these amendments, and some of the votes were super close. And so now we're at the point where we're doing the recommendation. He's, you know, they're recusing themselves. Should that not have happened prior to where we are now? And should we go back and revote and make sure we're all aligned? Because some of those votes were within one vote. Because they're kind of taking themselves out a little late in the ballgame. How does that work?
Jim Nice, first of all, what we voted on last time were recommendations. They weren't, they were recommendations to be referred. But Jay, could you address that? Because I have some concern about that also.
Yes, Mr. Nice, Jay Leipzig, planning director, be happy to address that. And I'm also going to refer to Rick Lind, if he would also like to speak on that, too, as well, Rick. But my understanding is the 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 straw votes that were taken at the previous meeting on the 26th of October were just to 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 give staff direction, offer that direction in terms of consensus, what they're thinking. It's not an official vote this evening. If if you all conclude with a with a recommendation tonight, that would be the official vote. So that's that's kind of the that was that straw vote was really taken just to get some direction from staff in terms of developing the the guidelines and the stipulations. Rick, do you want to add anything to that?
With the Johnson County Legal Department, Jay really summarized it pretty well. I think that what was happened last time was just some straw poll guidance votes that were given to staff. They were not binding. You're free tonight to change those and go opposite of those recommendations. Those were not final votes. Tonight, you can take a final vote and you can revise those. So I don't think they were binding. If you wanted to take new votes, I think that would be at the pleasure of the chair and you all, if you wanted to take new votes. But my understanding was that was to just give staff guidance as to what to bring before you today. They've told you what the changes were, so you can go one by one and go opposite of those changes if you want to.
Jim Nice. Some of those suggestions were incorporated, like you say, into the into the proposal we had tonight. So at the end of the public hearing, I think we're going to have to maybe think of a couple of things, two or three things we're going to do. We're either going to possibly either accept the proposal that the staff has given us as it's written. We could accept the proposal the staff has written to be amended by something that we wanted to change. If that was, we want to change one of those recommendations. Or I think the third thing that we would probably do if if time runs out and we don't have time, if we choose to to continue this, again, I think that's appropriate way. So I think that's a really good observation. And I think that in reality, to to go along with legal there, that we're going to have a time at the end of our at the end of our open, of our public hearing to determine what we're going to do going forward. And at that point in time, if you want to go back to three miles or two miles and 1,000 acres or whatever, I think that would be the time to to bring that up. So with that, did we answer your concerns? Okay. Is that the, Jay, is that the conclusion of your?
Yes, sure, nice, Jay Leipzig. That does conclude our presentation this evening.
Okay.
I'll answer questions from.
With that, then I think it's time for us to open up the public hearing. And to kind of back up a little bit, we're going to allow two minutes. And I'm not going to stop anybody in the middle of a sentence if you go over two minutes. But please be respectful of the time because, like the previous, the chairman in the past has been very considerate of your of your your comments. But we want to stay within as close to that two minute timeframe as we as we can. I think if it would last, if we if we could have the ones, the folks that are on Zoom make their presentation first, I hope nobody is too upset if I do that rather than being in line and we'll get the Zoom people taken care of. So if you would, if you could proceed with the with the Zoom.
Sir, give me one second.
I'll give you two minutes.
Thank you. Mighty kind of you. I'm going now. Yes. Showing too many screens. All right, our first speaker on Zoom is going to be Elaine Geisel. Elaine, you should be able to speak now.
Hello, good evening all. My name is Elaine Geisel. I live at 11705 West 101st Terrace in Overland Park, Kansas. I'm the current Chair of the Kansas Chapter of the Sierra Club, an environmental organization with more than 3.5 million members and supporters worldwide. I'm speaking tonight officially on behalf of more than 22,000 members who live in Kansas, 560 in Douglas County and 1,648 in Johnson County. Sierra Club promotes energy conservation and efficiency and supports a rapid replacement of fossil fuel generation of electricity with renewable energy sources. We do not support an arbitrary cap on the size of large scale solar facilities or the imposition of unnecessary restrictions, which might be a deterrent to their development. The climate crisis is already causing catastrophic changes around the world. A new study suggests that the current rate of greenhouse gas pollution, we only have about 11 years to rein in emissions if countries everywhere, including our country, want to avoid the worst damage from the climate crisis. We simply don't have the luxury of time to debate the right to view scapes versus the future of our children. Clean and efficient solar and wind installations, along with energy conservation and energy storage, can replace dirty fossil fuel plants quickly with significant reductions in greenhouse gas emissions and very positive public health impacts, particularly in our already overburdened communities. Transformational measures required to replace fossil fuels must be must be implemented soon where most feasible and where potential for emission reductions is the greatest. Utility scale renewables provide high paying jobs, lower utility costs, and potentially increase the future tax base with minimal environmental impacts, which benefits all of us. While planners have been weighing different views on private property rights, the Solar Siding Guidelines ultimately recommended should be based on science because they will affect us all, not just local landowners. You should lead on the adoption of fact based standards, which can help all of us have a more sustainable place to live in Kansas. Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. Next person?
All right, our next speaker is going to be Marvin Kanoki. Marvin, you should be able to speak now.
Hello, planning commissioners. My name is Marvin Kanoki. I live at 1605 West Maple Street, Nevada, Missouri. I am an Evergy customer. Governments must ensure that we have frameworks and infrastructure in place to phase out carbon emissions as scheduled. This is a valid reason for a solar farm. A solar farm is green energy. Leaders and policymakers across the world have decisions to make to meet the targeted schedule for green energy. This is a valid reason for a solar farm. A solar farm means diversifying energy supply to increase security and reliability and increase the affordability and availability of energy. This will also achieve reduction in pollution and other localized effects of burning fossil fuels. Advances in technology and infrastructure in solar energy in solar energy storage and power grids will continue to help in the increased demand for electricity, thus reducing blackouts. I am a proponent for the West Gardner Solar Farm. And as a proponent, I request that fair and reasonable zoning regulations be adopted for solar farms. I request that conditional use permit terms be at least 25 years. I request that visual screening only be required at existing nearby residences. I request that setbacks from from public roads be limited to 25 feet. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Marvin. Next.
All right, our next speaker is Karen Kegel Miners. Karen, you should be able to speak now.
Karen, are you there?
She is.
Hi, I'm having trouble with my audio. I will pass for now and keep listening. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Thank you. All right, our last Zoom speaker is Stephen Clark. Stephen Clark, you should be able to speak.
Good evening. My name's Steve Clark. I live at 3422 Kensington Court in Altorato Hills, California. As noted before, I was a longtime resident of Johnson County, and I have over 40 years of experience in power engineering, over 13 years of experience specific to solar farms. I'm going to speak a little bit more extemporaneously this evening. And I'm just going to mention that the draft solar regulations put forward by staff this evening will allow a solution space, they'll allow solar to be built. And they don't deny private companies or private landowners from proceeding with a project that would be for the benefit of society. I will say, however, that those regulations still include a number of regulations that are more strict than any other regulatory agency in the entire country, as far as I know. Nowhere else has the project area been set as a cap. Project extent has not been as set as a cap. No other jurisdiction has specified a maximum panel coverage. No other jurisdiction has specified a minimum distance from city boundaries, minimum distance from another solar project. These are all unique and challenging to Johnson County. Yet I hear with the absence of two solar supporting commissioners, there's discussion of making these requirements even more strict. If you do so, you're endangering the possibility of any meaningful solar being and being built in Johnson County. You will be caving in to the NIMBYs, to the anti-science, to the climate change deniers. That will be irresponsible. It will result in a black eye for Johnson County. It would be the worst thing that you could do to deny a useful, positive solar renewable project. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. So if that's the end of our Zoom requests, and we call the first in-house.
All right, our first in-person speaker is John Frank. John Frank. Frankie.
Hi, my name is John Frankie. I live at 2222 North 600 Road, Udora, Kansas, 66025. For Johnson County, it's 165th Street, runs right into 600 Road, and we're two miles west of the county line. Based on the proposals we've seen from this energy company, the property, our west property line would abut that. So we are very concerned. My wife and I are both Kansans, born and raised in Johnson County. Spent most of our life in this county. Seen a lot of changes over the years. Used to camp out at 95th and Metcalf. My dad used to hunt at 75th and Metcalf. Things change. We got married, we moved to Gardner, Kansas. That's when it was still a one stoplight town. It's changed. I do understand change is inevitable, and we've got to be, we've got to be prepared for that. As a 40 plus Johnson County resident, I saw phenomenal growth with this county and Douglas County. While the county planners and officials at, over the years, had the foresight to consider agriculture, consider nature, consider the environment, and consider the growth of this county. My father was one of those people. He was county commissioner, second district, Johnson County, back in the 80s. And I learned a lot from that man on how to take care of things and how to take care of the people. He did spend some time in Washington before his death, but my love and respect for nature and the environment started with him. He was a scout. He was a scout master, and one of the things he always told the scouts, "You're going to leave a place better than you found it." And by God, he made sure we did. And that does, that still applies to my life. We bought five acres two years ago, 1895 farmhouse, with the desire to, we're beekeepers too, to, number one, improve the land back to its natural settings, pollinator plants, native grasses, et cetera. Last year, we were blessed with the ability to buy another 100 acres attached to it. It's about 40 acres of pasture, natural.
Excuse me, excuse me here.
And I only got, can I give you a copy of this?
You can get, you can give that to staff.
If, yeah, because I.
Leslie, were we going to have a 10-second?
Oh, I would love to have you all come out to my farm sometime and show you around the other farms in our area. I'll meet you at the county line if need be. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our next in-person speaker is John Peterson. John Peterson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, John Peterson, 6001 118th Terrace of Leewood, Kansas, appearing tonight on behalf of NextEra Energy Company. The regulations as proposed this evening present a workable process for the planning and consideration of a viable utility-scale solar project as they pertain to the vast majority of planning components needed to design and construct a successful facility of superior quality. These include provisions for height, noise, setbacks, buffering, screening, road maintenance, and decommissioning, amongst others. But a touchstone of that workability is that they provide guideposts for the planning boards and B.O.C.C., but leave a level of discretion to modify requirements when they have actual designed projects submitted in specific locations before them. Yet the proposed regulations are void of such discretion when it comes to the fundamental issues of term and size of the project. As NextEra and other industry leaders have consistently stated, time and acreage sufficient to meet requirements of power purchase agreements, financing requirements, and public utility planning is foundational to whether a solar project can ever commence. Provisions dictating caps for project extent, project size, and terms of a CUP, if not arbitrary, are at the least subjective without the benefit of the subject and application before the decision-makers. I would suggest the project extent is unnecessary. I've said that before. But at least it has a provision, as proposed by staff, that the B.O.C.C. and the planning board can look at the specific circumstances and modify it. We would ask for, the same should be true for project size. Why put an artificial cap? Let the application earn a larger size through great design elements. If there is a cap, at least allow the B.O.C.C. to modify if they deem it appropriate. And the same holds true for the term. We would request 30 years, 25 years, we appreciate. But there could be circumstances, utility interface, with the energy producer of solar energy that could make sense for it to be. Leave the B.O.C.C. that discretion to modify policy when they see an actual application.
Thank you.
We appreciate the time.
Thank you.
I would close by saying, if a waiver is not specifically set forth in the regulations, it's not inherent and cannot be accomplished. Thank you so much for your time.
Hey, Leslie, were you going to like have a bell ring at 10 seconds? Did I hear you say that? I haven't heard the bell. To give the folks a little idea of when the time's up.
Okay, yes, I can turn off the text. It's just, I don't, the keyboard's not really working over here. So.
Okay.
I'm gonna, I can come up to the, oh, you can do it. Okay, the next speaker is William Wilkins.
I think I'm next.
Give me a second. I will just say beep at 10 seconds, and then I'll fix this later.
So you've already heard from John Peterson, who addressed William Wilkins for NextEra. So you've already heard from John Peterson, who addressed two of our main issues. Our primary issues are size and term, which is the time limit on the CUP. As a potential applicant, NextEra is a forward-looking company. I understand much of the discussion has been rear-looking. The industry is changing to meet market demands. Right here in your backyard, Evergy released their Integrated Resource Plan last year. Their plan is to acquire 700 megawatts of solar over the next five years. Also, there's significant demand from commercial and industry customers, such as Amazon and Google. Developers, especially at the utility scale, are simply responding to the market demands. Now, we acknowledge that our industry perspective has been considered in the subsequent drafts of the regulations, and we appreciate that. We hope that those aren't taken back significantly tonight. Term and size do have the ability to make a project unviable or ultimately unable to meet the demands of the industry. Our experience in solar development stretches across decades and multiple regions across the U.S. With the experience we bring to the table, we will work to address your concerns, earn your trust, but we need regulations that allow us to simply plan and develop a viable project. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Next.
All right, our next in-person speaker is Rob McCollum. Rob McCollum.
Leslie, I didn't hear you ding, but it wasn't 10 seconds yet.
I know. It said 10 seconds. I'm not sure why it's dinged at 20 seconds, but it seems he got the picture.
I'm going to speak first. I'm his wife, Sharman McCollum. We live on Edgerton Road, just a little bit over a mile from the north boundary of this project.
Grab your address, please.
15215 Edgerton Road, Gardner, Kansas. First of all, this is not green. I recently played a video on YouTube that all of you should watch called Planet of the Humans. There is nothing green about a solar farm. The earth is so ravaged to gather all the elements of it. There's nothing green about it, except the money that's going to flow into pockets. Perhaps a quote from Daniel Webster, one of our founders, would be appropriate here. It says, "It is hardly too strong to say that the Constitution was made to guard the people against the danger of good intentions. There are men in all ages who mean to govern well, but they mean to govern. They promised to be good masters, but they mean to be masters." Perhaps that applies here. "You appear to want to rule over us, the Western Johnson County bumpkins, who live in a, quote, wasteland. I am incensed regarding comments made by a member of this body last meeting speaking of our beautiful rural area as a wasteland. You appear to mean to govern by trying to steamroll over us. We knew nothing about this until this summer, by the way. Last time, one of your esteemed members claimed landowners could do as they wished with their land. But that is not true. Everywhere in this county, as you cross the county line, there's a big sign that says, and I quote, it's pretty close to exact, "Permits required to build or divide land." And my husband will continue from that point.
Yeah, I get tired of people saying.
Excuse me, sir. Could I have your name, please?
Robert McCollum, same address. They keep saying that they can do with their land as they please. You can't do that. If it was, I'd start a pig farm. That is, you can't even do that in Johnson County. And put a trailer on a lot in Johnson County and see how long that lasts. You have to have some kind of a constructed home. You can't use a trailer. So all these things about, "I can do what I want with my property" is not real. And the coal-fired power plants that we are tearing down, they are being shipped to China. A lady talked on Zoom about science. Okay, she isn't paying attention to science because we all supposedly have this atmosphere that we breathe. Whether you're in China or whether you're here, if you're burning coal, what's the difference, except they get the cheap electrical stuff. We get the expensive, made-in-daylight. So the plants that we paid for, that we built, constructed, used, until this new administration come on, now is going to be sent to China so they get the benefit out of everything that we did. I don't understand why people can't see what's going on here, but they're as blind as they choose to be.
That is right.
And most of the farmers out there, we don't have real farmers anymore. Generally, it takes 3,500 to 5,000 acres to be a farmer. The people that do farm lease a lot of this land from other landowners. And it's just ridiculous, this whole thing. It's so dumb.
Thank you very much. Next.
All right, our next speaker in person is Jane Kanoki. Jane Kanoki.
Good evening, everyone. It's good to see you again. I think we are meeting an awful lot these months. I wanted to ask you to keep these regulations the same. They've been discussed quite thoroughly, and that. I do have one thing, though, I would like to have kind of capped, and that is the CUP review process going greater than 45 days. I can certainly understand that and understand the need for that since this is a very big project, one of the biggest there. But I would like to have an upper-end cap of, say, 90 days, 120 days, if you need longer to bring in experts and other reviews. So I would put that as a comment there. I would also like you to think about, a few weeks ago, in the news, Kansas City announced they're putting a solar farm up by the airport. And that the great news about that proposal is that shows their commitment to climate change. And as they try to reach out and get more businesses or get the World Cup or things like that to come to Kansas City, that is considered a very powerful plus on their side. So I think if you look at Johnson County, and you want to say, "Well, what can Johnson County do to better its image to outside interests that want to come here and develop or promote or have something?" You might want to think about doing that. Also, I'd like to remind you about your resolution. And as zoning board members, you probably want to pay particular attention to that, that supports agricultural uses. When you take photovoltaics or agrovoltaics and you want to have grass or sheep underneath the panels, that it would be supporting agricultural business. So please, keep these resolutions, these regulations the same and support solar energy. Thank you very much for your time. I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
All right, our next speaker is Joan Kelly. Joan Kelly.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Joan Kelly. I live at 36050 West 154th Street in Gardner, Kansas. So for those of us who do our own due diligence on a regular basis in various venues, mine includes speaking for profoundly disabled individuals who are lost in the policymaking currently occurring across our nation. I'm very familiar with, I'm just going to be real honest with you. We have a virus among us that's worse than COVID. It involves the manipulation of data and statistics in the creation of policy with smooth words and suppression of critical data. You are affecting fully informed decision-making or withholding it. We're talking about corporate deception versus caring for our neighbors, the justification of greed, and there are questions of the long-term sustainability of these types of projects. The alleged science is based on select information. I'm well aware of select information in the advocacy work I do at the state and federal level. We are well aware of the information presented that there's backdoor deals, there's intimidation amongst people of integrity. There's much pressure put needlessly on people that have a higher level of integrity than unfortunately a number of people in this room. And it affects hard-working citizens who worked hard to live out in the country. We may or may not be able to stop corporate bullying or smooth-worded information that carries a large percentage of falsehood. But I will tell you in closing that accountability and a day of reckoning finally comes for everybody. It comes for all of us, and it goes beyond any natural human endeavor. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
All right, our next speaker is A.D. Chafe.
Leslie, how many more do we have?
After that, we have seven.
Okay, I'm going to take a break about 7 o'clock for about 10 minutes. So we'll have a couple more, and then I'm going to take a break, please.
Might I go now?
Yes, sir. You certainly are. Your name, address?
A.D. Chaffey. I live at 5540 and 1/2 O-Sage, Kansas City, Kansas. As all of you have here, there is a copy of an affidavit filed this past week. I want to make mention of a couple of things. Primarily, I want to start with the Kansas Constitution because every agency of government is entirely bound by every word of the Constitution. And it seems to me that, you know, I come here, God willing, with a charitable heart, but it is being made very difficult to sustain by the things I observe here. Kansas says, "This enumeration of rights," and this is just a portion of the Constitution, "this enumeration of rights shall not be construed to impair or deny others retained by the people." Well, if we want to know where others are, where are we going to look? We've got 50 other constitutions to look at, and that would be a rational place to look for them, if you ask me. So what does Virginia have to say about it? Well, one of the things it says in Section 2, "People, the source of power, that all power is vested in and consequently derived from the people. The magistrates are their trustees and servants and at all times amiable to them." Now, just in case, "amiable" is not a word you're commonly familiar with. It means answerable, called to account. That means at any time, they are at all times amiable to them. That means when someone, a member of the people, has an address or a question to this body, it is under absolute binding obligation to God, their fellow man, and the Constitution to answer that, whether it's during public speaking or not. There are several other things that can be mentioned, and I will do my best to honor your two minutes.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Appreciate that. Next, please.
The next speaker is Joyce Whittier. Joyce Whittier.
My name is Joyce Whittier. I live at 7414 Flint Street, Shawnee, Kansas. It's admirable that Mr. Iliff and Mr. Hutchins decided not to be here tonight. However, I'm pretty sure that came about after I sent my comments yesterday. Chairman Iliff is a chairman, he is the Planning Commission chairman, and John Peterson, the attorney for NextEra, had failed to inform the Planning Commission or the public of their professional relationship at Miracle of Innocence, where Mr. Iliff is the executive director and Mr. Peterson is the chairman. I have filed an ethics complaint against Mr. Iliff with the Missouri Disciplinary Committee, and I have filed an ethics complaint against Mr. Peterson with the Kansas Disciplinary Committee. and I have filed an ethics complaint against Mr. Peterson with the Kansas Disciplinary Committee. Given their professional relationship, Mr. Iliff should have recused himself from all discussions, meeting and voting. And a failure to do that by two members of this board casts some serious doubt over the validity of your actions, legal validity of it. There's also a conflict involving the Kenoke family. Stephen Clark, who you've heard from, is married to Laura Beth Kenoke. Diane Kenoke is the project coordinator of TerraCon, a company based in Olathe that could very well become involved with the management of the solar farm. She is married to Marvin Kenoke. All of these relationships should have been disclosed to the planning commission. And I would like to close with Kansas statutes. It's KSA twelve seven five four A. Cities may define their zoning jurisdiction to include unincorporated portions of the county that are located within three miles from the boundaries of the city, but in no event more than half the distance to another city.
Thank you very much. I'll tell you what I'm going to do. I'm going to take a break now for about ten minutes. Forgive me, we went four minutes too long, but we were out of water, and that's very, very important up here.
Are you ready?
Okay, Leslie, you do the next.
All right. Our next speaker is Travis Hardy. Travis Hardy. He's he's walking in.
My name is Travis Hardy. I live at four twenty one East twenty four hundredth Road, Edgerton, Kansas.
Excuse me, could you get a little bit closer to the mic?
Oh, sure. My name is Travis Hardy. I live at four twenty one East twenty four hundredth Road, Edgerton, Kansas. And I just want to start off thanking Killer Rasp and Jim Neese because they've actually, you know, listened. They've questioned things, and we appreciate that from our side, whereas some others have not done that. And we really want to thank you guys for that. I would also like to say for the folks that maybe haven't listened or, you know, some of the ones that say, next Tara, you know, we need to make sure that the company is viable and they make a profit. I would wish that you would maybe listen to your counterparts in Douglas County and actually, you know, they listen to us. They actually thanked us for providing information, giving feedback, having conversations back and forth. They met with us. And I would say, you know, that's been a much more pleasant experience than what we've seen here. You know, and one thing that I'd also like to bring up is we've heard that the land is going to be left as ag, right? I mean, it's going to be considered ag. So taxes off that land is still going to be ag, can't do industrial because there's rules around that. So the amount of money that the county is going to get is not going to be near enough for this. It's going to increase costs, though, because zoning is a huge deal. You're going to have to go out, you know, if you do your due diligence, you're going to have to look at where they're wanting to put it. Look at all the parcels of land. Do you have the staff for that? Probably not. I mean, your staff's priority full with what they're doing today. Who's going to go out there and actually make sure that these companies are following the rules that are set forth here? Once again, another cost. Who's paying for that? You know, and you guys, it just really feels like there's a lot of downsides, but from a financial standpoint, there's not a lot of gain. And I that just worries me. I mean, the county needs to make sure, whatever they do, that they come out hole in this and they're not left, you know, hole in the back. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
All right, our next speaker is Alan England. Alan England.
I'm Alan England. I live at one seven zero nine zero Evening Star Road, Edgerton. Heard a lot of planning commissioners speak about ensuring financial viability of the applicant and describe a win, win, win as a win for the county, win for the applicant, Nextera, and a win for participating landowners. Missing from this equation has been nonparticipating landowners who stand to lose and have raised valid concerns about the negative consequences of massive utility scale solar. Topic that has not received much attention is how such a massive land use may deprive nearby residents of future government services and private company investment. Government and private companies use demographic trends for decision making. When areas aren't growing, it won't be at the top of the list for limited funding for school improvements, parks, walking or bike trails or other public services. Here it won't be a priority for private investment either. It won't be on the list for extending cable and internet services or improving cell phone coverage for voice or five G. So as you think about win, 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 you should also think about the numerous losers created by such a massive land use in our county. Here's a simple solution. Simple solution is limiting the maximum size to something more suited to an urbanizing Johnson County. The maximum size was limited to a section of six hundred and forty acres, and the character of the community is not overwhelmed by single land years. The demographics of the area would continue to support improvements in both public and private services. Impacts to French cities would be mitigated as they could go around projects of this scale and more landowners throughout the county could participate. As for the potential impact on a future applicant, I look at solar projects deployed in twenty twenty as informative. For the list of deployed projects provided to this commission by Stephen Clark, one hundred sixty two solar projects deployed in the United States in twenty twenty. One hundred thirty four of those, roughly eighty five percent, are one hundred megawatts or less. Fifteen are in Nextera's home state of Florida, and we're all seventy five megawatt projects. Only one project in the entirety of the United States in twenty twenty was deployed that is large as that which Nextera proposes to put in our area. One hundred sixty one projects out of one hundred sixty two were smaller than that which Nextera proposes here. Twenty two thousand to three thousand acres is not required to make a financially viable project. Mitigate this, I urge you to consider reducing the maximum size to six hundred and forty acres. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, please.
All right, our next speaker is Mike Young. Mike Young.
My name is Mike Young. I live at one seven zero three five County Line Road, Edgerton, Kansas. This supposed area of this huge solar farm is going to be on all four sides of me, north, south, east and west. I have ten acres out there and an old eighteen ninety farmhouse that I bought about ten or twelve years ago because I got bought out by the intermodal and had to move, had no choice. Well, now I have a choice. I'd like to stay where I'm at. You guys are appointed officials or whatever. The commission are elected officials. Well, there's a whole lot of voters out here that if this goes through, they're not going to be happy about it. I'm not happy about it. I pay taxes just like all the rest of you do, and I probably pay a lot more. I have I have a business of my own. I have thousands of customers in Douglas and Johnson County. So just remember that whenever it comes election time that people can get voted out. It's it's just ridiculous that we're even talking about this right now. I'm not against solar, and none of these other people out there are against solar. We're just against solar where you're wanting to put it. And it's because these guys from Nextera came in and offered Kenoke and a few other. There's like six landowners out there that's involved in this. They offered the Kenokis lots of money. I don't blame them for wanting to get it. But it's just it's just a ridiculous place where you're wanting to put this. There's there's like two hundred and twenty houses out there that's within a mile of this area and four hundred and forty voters. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next.
All right, our next speaker is Richard Gaul. Richard Gaul.
Howdy. Richard Gaul. My wife, Donna, and I live at three eight four zero zero West one eight three Street, Edgerton. I'm proud to have been one of the many people that worked for Kansas City Power and Light and built and maintained electric lines in me basically Johnson County, but in the Kansas City area. I I don't know this, but I it only makes common sense to me that ever since the invention of the light bulb, the the need for electricity just keeps going up. This gets greater and greater and greater, and and I'm sure it's not ever going to slow down. And from what I hear about the power plants, the coal-fired power plants, we're going to have to replace them with something, and solar makes sense. Also, I I can't remember for sure the the country in Europe, but but I've heard that one of the countries in Europe, the the most popular brand new car is an electric car. And I'm sure that's going to get greater and greater here in the USA. And and we're going to need places, we're going to need filling stations that have electricity, not gas. I if if this goes through, we have signed a lease on thirty acres of our land. And and I would be really, really proud to be one of the people to have been able to provide electricity to people wherever it may be so that they can enjoy their life more. I mean, let's face it. Where would you put electricity in our daily needs? I almost quit at thirteen seconds, but I'll let it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next.
All right, our next speaker is Byron Byron Wiley. Byron Wiley.
Good evening. My name is Byron Wiley, twelve hundred Almyra in Lawrence, Kansas. Think we need to take into consideration the long view on all of this and think about our future generations. Renewables cannot self replicate. PV panels completely depend on petroleum. Yet I thought the goal was to become reliant, become less reliant on fossil fuels. Energy dense fossil fuel is essential for mining, refining, manufacturing, transportation, and ultimately, it's a fossil fueled process to recycle it. E-waste garbage takes a lot of dirty energy to clean up. So what is renewable or sustainable about this, about renewables? When they rely on a finite supply of fossil fuels, it boils down to an uncomfortable truth that an industrial solar facility is just fossil fuel morphed into what appears to be green, a green form of energy production perpetuating the unsustainable. It's a progress trap, an effort to fix a problem, but creating a new set of conditions than what was there before. And it's interesting tonight, earlier discussions, I think from staff, you mentioned the decommissioning. And I sort of wonder how on earth is this considered a sustainable project? When you're talking about such a short term, it's going to be decommissioned and turned back into agriculture or whatever. It just seems to be an admission of the flaw. I think that it'd be appropriate to establish zoning regulations that allow for small and microscale projects are more appropriate for PV solar. I've seen some dual use, small scale options that can function on the periphery of regular farming operations that can benefit the landowners with some energy autonomy and perhaps small scale energy sales. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next.
I would also like to let the record reflect that Lindsay Grissette has now joined us through Zoom.
Hi, Lindsay, go ahead.
All right, our next speaker is Carrie Brandon. Carrie Brandon. And after that, we have only one more.
Hello, everyone. And first of all, I want to say, wow, I think we've kind of. Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes, Carrie Brandon, I have not spoken in front of the Johnson County Planning Commission thus far. Carrie Brandon, I live at four five zero East twenty three hundred Road. It's Udora, Kansas, and my husband also, who is not here tonight, also lives there. But I want to say that tonight, I really feel like we really witnessed something firsthand that's pretty remarkable. I have lived on the Johnson County side my entire life for fifty years. Just recently that we built our dream home out in Douglas County on forty acres that we have worked butts off, blood, sweat and tears because we're not, you know, millionaires. And we have built something out there that we love and we want to protect it. And I'm sure everyone understands that. What I want to point out tonight is that I'm very pleased to see the result of the unified voices of US citizens. And the country that we live in is an amazing place, and we need to protect that with everything we have. And I want to say thank you especially to Kelly and to Jim because the two of you, I feel, have really listened and understood what we've been trying to say up until this point. And it has kind of changed a little bit. You know, we still have to deal with the regulations and what we've got to do here, but it has changed for us the feeling that at least we're being heard now, right? And that's so important. It's so important. I think that one of the differences, being on the Douglas County side for the last several weeks, observing the planning commission over there, I do want to commend them too, because there's we've had a stark contrast going on. And it's been a really hard thing to to struggle with the differences between what we experienced with one planning commission and what we're experiencing on the Johnson County side up until tonight. And I just want to thank whoever it is in this room that is listening finally and the the state, the district attorney, Steve Howe, and even the Kansas District Attorney, all of the people that were ethical and honorable in serving the people. Thank you, and let's just make smart decisions moving forward from this point. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Jim Neese, I would I would just like to say there's been a couple people on the board that have mentioned and you know, I've been doing this since nineteen eighty with lots of folks. And I just want to say that I do not know one person that sits up here, whether they talk too much like I do, or they're silent, or they listen. But I want to personally tell everybody here that it's my opinion that everybody that sits on these boards does so for the love of the county, the love of the country, and to try to do the right thing. And it's not always easy to do that. So I just wanted to say that because that's in my heart, and it's something that I know and I believe that all the members on all the boards in this county, that I happen to know most of them that do it on a voluntary basis, do it to try to be fair and equitable and do best what's what's for the populace of our particular county. So with that said, next, please.
All right, our final speaker is Calvin Hayden. Calvin Hayden.
Hi, Jim and company and friends, neighbors, a lot of my neighbors out here. You know, I've sat on.
What's your name, Calvin?
My name is Calvin Hayden. I live at one forty four fifty three Edgerton Road, Gardner, Kansas, right in the neighborhood of this mess. Guys, I want you to know, I've sat on these boards. Jim, I was on with you at the zoning board for eighteen years, and you're absolutely right. Everything we try to do is to try, I mean, we've done rock quarries, done all these fights. What I don't like about this is there have been people around making contracts two years down the road. Transparency is always a good thing, guys. And when you're walking around out here making contracts with farmers and people two years before this thing starts, it's wrong. You need to get community buy-in before you do it. Second thing I've got is I don't understand why we're in Johnson County. The economic engine of the state of Kansas was some of the most expensive property in the state of Kansas, the highest producing. I can raise a cow on three acres. You go down to Montgomery County, it takes ten, twelve acres to raise a cow. But we want to be right here in the top producing property, and it doesn't make sense to me. There's people looking for jobs out west. There's property out there. The transmission lines go all over the place. Why are you here? That's a problem for me. Now, you've come out to my neck of the woods. I've lived on Edgerton Road for forty years. The, I had to move from De Soto to come out to rural Johnson County, now I gotta try to move again because you guys want to bring in a bunch of industrial stuff. These things are made in China, you know it as well as I do, you've already brought them in, they're in a warehouse. You're acting like this is a done deal and that's not right, Jim, that's not right. So I think there's a lot of issues with Bunce County has put a moratorium on these, McPherson's put um uh moratorium on these. I, I think you guys need to follow the science here because, and I'm here, we're talking about this global warming junk. Now, need I remind you, this used to be an ocean we were standing in, the climate changes. It does, and there's not a darn thing we can do about it. Thank you for your time, I wanted to end up with the pledge of allegiance, but I don't think I'm going to have time. I suggest you guys start with it. Thank you.
Thanks, Calvin. Is there any other speakers?
That's all, sir.
Okay, with that, um I'd kind of like to open it up to I need to, I'm going to close the public hearing. And uh with that, uh ask if there's any questions or discussions we'd like to have. And then uh after that happens, whether or not there wants to be any kind of a activity that we proceed with this evening.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to bring something up, this is Mike Levin.
Mike.
I know there was a change from staff and, and I want to, first of all, thank staff for all their, their hard work. I know they put a lot of time and energy into this. Um I, I see where they changed the permit term from twenty years to twenty-five years, I am still struggling. And I'll tell you where it's coming from on that, um I believe any established company, I mean, this is based on their need for finances. I believe any established company that has already demonstrated uh that they are able to, to build and maintain a facility without having issues at the county or place they put it in. They shouldn't have a problem with financing if they've been able to demonstrate that they follow the regulations of the county and there's no reason for them not to have renewed permits. And I really want to stress, I think that should be twenty years, not twenty-five years in my, my opinion.
Uh, okay, thank you, then that's uh, that kind of begs with the question that was brought up earlier. Why don't we have some discussion and before we we kind of move on and figure out what we want to do here tonight, I think we can uh if, if it's, if there is a motion and we want to readdress that term uh because that was a, a night in that we voted on last time to make a recommendation to county commissioners. And if that's one thing we want to change or amend, I think that this, you know, that's something that we would certainly anticipate. Any other questions?
Uh this is Kelly Rast, uh I'll make a motion that we take a new straw vote. Um because we did have several uh regulations that we had to do a couple votes on. And then whatever vote actually won was, ended up being the recommendation, so I do think it's very important. So I make a motion, we go back and vote on the term.
Uh Jim Neese, can I ask you to hold that for just a minute?
Yes.
Because there might be some, I've got a couple of questions and maybe somebody else has something uh that would, would go along with that. Uh Jay, I, I do have a question in reference to the setbacks and that types of things, I do not know the answer to this. Reason I'm asking is uh my question says, are the setbacks uh comparable to other setbacks required? To say myself, if I want to do something on forty acres or a hundred acres or ten acres?
Yes, Mr. Neese, Jay Leipzig, Planning Director, uh as an item um three A under the project boundary setbacks.
Right.
That fifty-foot boundary, that is the same in the RUR zoning district.
Okay.
That was done very intentionally, so it's on, consistent with that.
Okay, I've got another question. When you go to the county commissioners, one thing that uh one of the county commissioners issued in a public interview was the property ta- the taxes that are going to be raised by this over the time. Could you tell us what the tax situation is? Do they have five years or ten years before they have to pay taxes? Are they going to be taxed if, if it's a forty-year project, how that's going to work? Could you give us some examples of what? You know, I want to have, have a feel for that.
Mr. Neese, I, I could, I can attempt to, to, to answer that, my understanding is these, th- this property would be taxed at a commercial rate. Uh I believe there is a ten-year abatement from the state that is, that is allowed. Um I, that, that type of information though, uh frankly, it's not a land use, I'm not an expert on that, I, I will need to verify that, but that's, that's my understanding, there is an, an abatement period. I believe it's ten years, there might be, uh I don't know, if Rick would like to address that.
What you're saying is that they're not going to have to pay any taxes according to the state statute for ten years. And at that point in time, they will be taxed to property value based on uh Rick, do you, could you give me some background on that, please?
Uh Rick Lind with the legal department, Mr. Chairman, uh I'm sorry, I don't really have a background on that question. That would be one for the appraiser. Uh my guess is that uh Mr. Peterson probably knows the answer to that question, but I don't know for sure.
Well, if, it would be my suggestion, if, if and when this goes to county commissioners, that that's something that they know because we got county commissioners saying, hey, we're going to get twenty-five million bucks. And that may well be, but if you start ten years from now and that's worth about eighteen million, and if you pay that over forty years, it's about two cents. So uh I would like for that information to be given when, when this is presented to the county commissioners, whoever, what department does that.
Uh Mr. Neese, uh Jay Leipzig, again, that wa- that was our intention, I had frankly, the planning commission foc- focusing on land use issues, but but yes, that is one, the information we're, we're going to gather and we have gathered uh part of that, so uh
Okay.
We can present that to the board of county commissioners.
And my other question is how will this, well, I guess based on taxes, it will not be based on, as if it were agriculture, I would assume.
Uh Mr. Neese, if you like Sean Pendley Plan stuff, I, I can answer part of that question. We did as James, we had some preliminary discussions with the appraisers office to try to get some information, but we haven't completed a full review. But the preliminary information we've received and, and as uh Mr. Lynn indicated, the applicant or a perspective utility provider can definitely provide better information on this, but from what we've learned, the taxes for renewable energy, the state does provide an abatement, a tax being a ten-year abatement for equipment for solar facility, solar equipment. After the time of that abatement, once that expires, the area of property where the solar equipment has been installed, that area of property will be taxed at a commercial rate or a, an appropriate rate for that equipment. It will not be taxed at an agricultural rate, so it will be an increased rate following the expiration of the abatement. I think that's the general understanding, but we probably need to gather additional information to confirm.
I don't want to get in the weeds here, but you know, I'm in a equipment financing business, so you have two things, you have equipment and land. Okay? And I think it needs to be made clear uh from the state statute, does the whole project get no, pay no taxes? How does that work? Because there's a difference between taxing the equipment and if the equipment's sitting on commercial land, all of a sudden they do that. You don't, I don't need an answer, I just saying, I think that that's something that the people of Johnson County, they're going to hear about this, you know, need to know. And I think that's a, that's a, you know, that's a reasonable question.
Um this is Kelly Rast, I'm pulling out Senator Thompson's letter and he does make a comment regarding they do not pay property taxes and this is Senator Thompson's letter that he sent to all of us, it may give some information. Basically says they are exempt from paying ad valorem taxes for a period of ten years. This is one backdoor subsidy to renewables I think needs to be reviewed. County taxpayers have to foot the bill for the unpaid taxes on these properties, pilot agreements usually fall significantly short of the price these industrial install, installations would otherwise pay. And by the time they do come on to the tax rolls, they have been allowed ten years of depreciation, so they never pay the full load. That's just according to Senator Thompson's remarks.
Okay, so, thank you, so I guess my, my request would be is that that, that needs to be given some layman's language, so when I pick up the paper and, and I see what that's going to be, I can understand it, enough said, I don't want to talk too much here. Any other comments or questions?
I am, um actually, um Lindsey Grisay has included in the chat, um I believe she's trying to unmute, but she says she would support new straw votes on terms of regulations. I have asked her to try to unmute and share her comments out loud.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I fully support Kelly's proposal to do a straw vote on different terms with the people who are presently here and by Zoom.
Can we let the record reflect that as Lindsey Grisay speaking?
Okay, thank you, uh I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear who you were at first, so I apologize, so if that's the case any other comments or does somebody want to make a you know, a, a motion to amend and affect, amend any something that we did in the last meeting with regards to I base, I think there were three things that we, whether we passed on, the size, the uh distance from a city and
Dave John's term.
Yeah, the term, thank you, those were the three things that we asked to pass on, so.
This, this is Mike Levin, yes, I'd like to make a motion that we redo those votes to give further direction to staff.
Kelly Rast, I'll second that.
Okay, I think you would do that, Jim Neese, I think you would do that by making a motion. Uh so if somebody wants to make a motion on one, one of those and if, or all, but I think we need to be, if you're going to want to change them, you need to do it individually.
Okay, then I apologize, this is Mike Levin, I'll start with making a motion to revote on the length of term. If I have
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, Jim Neese, uh for the length of term and what, what length of term?
Uh to reduce it from twenty-five to twenty years.
From twenty-five to twenty years, uh do we have a second?
Kelly Rast, I'll second that.
Do we have any discussion? The only discussion I would make is, is I really don't think it makes any difference between whether it be twenty years or twenty-five years because uh whatever time comes up, twenty, if this goes through in twenty-five years or twenty years, there's no county commissioner is going to tell them to stop doing it, so uh that's, you know, that's my discussion, so having said that, uh call for a vote, all those in favor of making the recommendation, now this is a recommendation, a referral to the county commissioners term be twenty years. Please say aye.
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 All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, we have uh one opposed, I'm not going to call the roll. I think uh maybe I should call a roll on that.
Mr. Neese, Jay Leipzig, I think I would recommend calling a roll if you don't mind, sir.
No, that's all right.
All right, I'm sorry, um our first, I'm going to say Michael Levin.
Uh yes.
And then Dave Johns.
Yes.
Uh George Lund.
I will say yes.
Jim Neese.
Yes.
Mark Huggins.
Yes.
Kelly Rast.
Yes.
Randall Downing.
No.
So that count then.
And uh Lindsey Grisay.
Yes.
Okay, so what's the count, Jim Neese?
Yes, seven to one.
Okay, so that was uh, that we recommend to the county commissioners that it be a twenty-year term rather than twenty-five-year term. And uh any other motions?
This is Kelly Rast, I'd like to make a motion to revisit the city limits.
Could be the buffer area.
Are you making a motion, what is the motion?
Um the, oh, the motion will be a two-mile buffer with a waiver.
This is Mike Levin, I'll second that motion.
Having a motion to move the, from one and a half miles, I believe, to two miles with a waiver. And uh we have a motion and a second, do we have any discussion? There are no discussion, I'll call for a vote, all in favor, by roll call, please do so.
Michael Levin.
Yes.
Mark Huggins.
No.
George Lund.
No.
Jim Neese.
Yes.
Dave Johns.
Yes.
Kelly Rast.
Yes.
Lindsey Grisay.
Yes.
Randall Downing.
No.
Count is?
Five to three and two.
Five, two, three.
It'd be five yeses and three noes.
Correct.
Okay, so it will then be referred to the county commissioners on your staff report as two miles from uh city limits. Any other motions? Any other motions?
Okay. Yeah, I would like to at least discuss the two thousand acres. I think that I've been searching for a win-win in this all the time. And tonight, this Dave Johns, this is the first time I heard, I, I always saw it as a, we couldn't get everybody on a win. There was a win, 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 lose, it was mentioned tonight. And so I think that we should definitely look at lowering that two thousand. And if it means it's, it's win-win or no deal, then maybe it is no deal.
Yeah, this is Kelly Rast, I kind of agree with that too, as far as nothing against solar, nothing against any of the solar companies. It's just, we are looking at Johnson County, which is incredibly different. There is lots of homeowners out there, this is a very unique area to be putting in this, and the terrain, the wildlife, anybody who's driven out there, it's not what you see anyplace out in the country. There's plenty of other opportunities or areas that might be better fit, so it's not that against, again, against the project. Location, location, location is huge, so I agree.
This is Lindsey, I, anybody who knows me knows that I've worked in the solar industry. And I even have concerns about the size limits as discussed in Johnson County, so I would certainly support revisiting the size recommendation um to make sure that we're all in alignment between the planning commission on the recommendation.
Okay, uh I guess my comment on this, the staff originally recommended a thousand acres. Uh we had a, I had a discussion privately with the staff about that, my concerns. And I've spent several hours researching uh the locations and the size of, of the potential applicant. And my, my feeling has all been along, along is it's not about this applicant. We don't even have an application yet. This is about looking out for the growth of our unincorporated area from any other company. And uh, and I, you know, I felt the thousand acres was a lot. But I, I uh, I believe that the thousand acre threshold that the, that the staff originally recommended was more appropriate uh to go a mile, two miles now, maybe, possibly, we don't know, from Spring Hill and put in two thousand acres and go another mile and do another two thousand acres and so on, so that's my, I've thought about this a lot and it's not about the, the group that is presently uh before us because that's really not the issue, the issue is is how are we going to stop the, the corridors of our existing cities? When you look at the map that we saw of nineteen eighty, and I moved out here way before that of Overland Park and, and Spring Hill and Gardner and what, that's forty years, forty-some years ago and what it is now. Two thousand acres, another half, another mile, another two thousand acres, so you know, I, if you're going to relook at it, I would recommend a thousand, go back to what staff originally recommended.
Mr. Chairman, uh this is Mike Levin, I have a quick question for a planning staff. I'm curious, I, I, it looks like to me that the majority of whatever company comes in would be in Johnson County, I'm curious, did Douglas County actually cap theirs at a thousand acres?
Um Commissioner Levin, they did originally cap that at a thousand, but then they removed that cap, I believe is the latest uh what I've heard, but I'm not uh absolutely certain of that.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I do have one other question, Jim Neese. Has there been any repercussions, I understand that uh Centwood County Has there been any repercussions? I understand that Centwood County, I think it was said in one of our, in our meetings, is that they have eliminated, they have forbidden wind?
Yes, Commissioner Neese, that is correct. They are also, I believe, in the process of, of developing new solar regulations. They're, they've, they've just started that process within the last month, but they have, right now, that wind energy is prohibited.
And I, the reason I ask that is I'm not suggesting that we don't have it. I was wondering if there's been any legal ramifications from, I know that you've heard of from that, from the, you know, the county planning there prohibiting wind. Has there been any? Rick, do you know?
Yes, there was the Zimmerman case down in Wabunsee County, where they decided that they didn't want wind energy in the Flint Hills. That county, though, had determined that the Flint Hills were a natural area that needed to be protected, and they had made that determination. And so they said that these would harm the Flint Hills, and so they prohibited, prohibited wind energy, and that went to a Kansas appellate court that upheld that determination. One of the reasons was aesthetics.
Thank you. So is there a motion on the, let me back up, is there a motion on the floor here to redress that?
Hey, Jim. Hey, Jim, this is Lindsey Grissette. I would support, I would support a motion to vote on whether the maximum area should be reduced from 2,000 to 1,000. I've been incredibly moved by the, the statements of the people tonight, and I appreciate everybody coming on both sides to share their opinions.
Are you making a motion?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Dave Johns, I'll second.
I have a motion, a second to.
Can I, this is Mike Levin. I have a quick question. I apologize. On the motion, are we discussing a straight 1,000 acres, or are we going to put a waiver on that, or a possible waiver?
This is Kelly Rast. Would it be, I think it'd be the maximum of 1,000, but the project area could be the one that has the waiver, like staff, isn't that what staff we had before?
Sean Pendley, planning staff, I'll try to clarify here. So if we're talking about the standard for just the the maximum project area, there is currently no waiver as drafted. It's 2,000 acres with no waiver. What staff has added with the change, recent, most recent change with the project extent, that would allow for a waiver. That is not the same as the project maximum area. So it, as what, I think would need to be clarified here with the commission to clarify, are you wanting to include a waiver with this change to 1,000? If it is 1,000, that's the cap, that's the maximum regardless. Unless change, unless there's a.
I'm not asking for a change. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. That's what I'm trying to.
So is your motion for 1,000 acre cap?
Yes, my motion is for 1,000 acre cap with no waiver.
Okay, we have a motion for 1,000 acre cap with no waiver. Is there a second?
Dave Johns still second it.
Dave's second it. Is there any discussion? Okay, I'll take a vote. Roll call, please.
Mr. Michael Levin.
Yes.
Uh, Mark Huggins.
Yes.
George Lund.
Yes.
Jim Neese.
Yes.
Dave Johns.
Yes.
Kelly Rast.
Yes.
Lindsey Grissette.
Yes.
Randall Downing.
Yes.
Unanimous.
So that count, 2,000 acres, to be referred to county commissioners, what was the vote, please?
That was unanimous, right? Mr. Neese, Jay Leipzig, quick, quick question for clarification. So the buffer from cities was for two miles?
Yes, sir.
Was, did that include a waiver as well?
Yes.
It did include a waiver. Okay, just want to make sure I'm, okay.
This is Kelly Rast. Now I have a question. So we change the cap of the max, do we need to look at the project extent and bring that down to 1,000 acres with a waiver so it matches what we were on board with before? Just different totals.
Planning staff, I think you would want to probably make a change to the project extent. I don't know what that comparable distance would be with a 1,000 acre. This is a new standard that we put for the four square miles. It's not necessary. You don't have to. If you've capped at 1,000, with that cap is probably not necessary, but it could be considered to reduce the project extent. It's up, it's up to the commission.
I think also, Commissioner Jay Leipzig, again, I think I would also agree with that statement. I think it might be better just to remove that project extent than might be an easier way to do that, I think, in my opinion.
Is, is that something that, say that again. I could, I couldn't.
I just, I would remove that project extent, that, that language, and just have the 1,000 acre cap as you had, had proposed and recommended.
Okay, we, and
This is Kelly Rast. I'll make a motion that we remove the project extent recommendation that was previously on the staff's report.
This is Mike Levin. I'll second that motion.
Mr. Chairman, Mark Huggins. I'm not sure what that means to remove the project extent. Would that mean that this 1,000 acre project could cover any space? Or are we, having the 80 acre maximum separation within the 1,000 acres would, would somehow contain that?
This is Sean Pendley, planning staff. That's a good question. I was looking at the draft regulations. There are descriptions for what is defined as project area, as assuming that with a new change with the 1,000 acre maximum, there's still definitions for project area, and within that, I believe there are still standards that no part of the project area shall be greater than a half mile from project area. That's, that's something staff would probably need to research to clarify that, to be sure.
I, I guess I wouldn't vote for this at this time because I think we need to have staff look at that. And while they're looking at that, I would like to, I know we had a resident, Mr. Young tell us that he was on a 10 acre tract that would be surrounded by this facility. I, I think we need to consider impact on the neighboring properties, and that would seem to me to be a big impact on, I would. He's got, he's on about the same size of ground I'm on, and I certainly wouldn't want to be surrounded by, on all four sides by this, even though I am in support of this industrial solar.
This is Sean Pendley, planning staff. I'll just clarify here. I checked the draft regulations. The definition of project area does include any portion of the project area shall not be located more than one half mile from the balance of the project area, or else such portion greater than one half mile shall be considered a separate utility scale solar facility application. So what I think that means is even if this were limited to a 1,000 acre maximum, no part of any parcel that's included within the condition use permit can be more than a half mile away from another portion. So in that effect, in that sense, it would restrict it from being extended too far, but as you say, there could still be some reason to still consider a project extent, just to clarify that geographic area. So it's, they're kind of interrelated.
This is Kelly Rast. Would there be a way to add something that says no one person's property can be surrounded more than by two sides of a solar project, or, I mean, could that say, save an individual that just happens to be kind of stuck in the middle of, you know, somebody's property that kind of goes around them?
This is Sean Pendley. I would want to research that, to come up with draft language for the commission to consider, if that's the wish of the commission to include that, that I would suggest that staff would research that to.
Commissioner, I would also, Jay Leipzig, I'd also concur with that as well, if you give us a chance to look at that more in detail and, and do a review and see if there's other, I'm sure there must be some language out there that, that, that might be applicable at other locations we might be able to look at as well.
Yeah.
Jim Neese, having said that, you know, there were, I think there were three options here. Pass it as, as presented, make changes and present it, or refer, defer it to another time. And, you know, I agree with you about being surrounded. My question is, I mean, I hate to have other meetings, but my, my question is, what is your sense about we want to do this right when we send it to them? This is real important. Of having a couple of these things be worked out and doing it again. Am I all, am I awful based on that? What do y'all think?
This is Mark Huggins. I agree. I don't know if it requires another public hearing, but
Yeah.
I, I would agree that giving staff a chance to, to make some new recommendation on these issues would be a good idea.
George Lund, I also agree with that. I think that'd be a good idea. Okay.
Just, Dave Johns, I think, and there's, there's more addresses that are completely surrounded. I think, I know, I've had in my notes, I think it's 40285 West 175th Street is also at least surrounded three ways. So this is not a isolated incident.
And remember, Jim Neese, this is not just this application.
Right.
It's the one south of De Soto and the one outside of Spring Hill and so on and so forth. So that's why this is important. So my question to you is, if we make suggestions, I know we're going to have a working a working session on the 6th. Is that, are we going to have something next month? I mean, or?
What I would suggest, Mr. Neese, if you all are comfortable with this, you could either, either continue the public hearing, or you could close the public hearing. We do have, is it December 12th?
Or 14th?
December 14th is a possible date for this, this group to meet again. We could have, and have the proposed recommendation for you on that date, if you all are willing to meet.
And not, and not have a public hearing? Have a public hearing?
That is correct. It does not have to be a public hearing. I wanted to verify that with Mr. Lind.
I, it, well, let me back up. Rick Lind with the legal department. The chair has closed the public hearing. That doesn't mean it can't be rescheduled for the next meeting, but you have closed the public hearing. No, you don't have to come back and have an additional public hearing. You can just have your own discussion and do your vote without having any comments.
And we could do that at a, at a later date?
Yes.
But that's still open, I'm sorry, it's Mike Levin, that's still open to the public.
It's still open to the public. You just don't have to have comments and, and have it be a public hearing.
Okay, if I can be so bold, then what I would suggest is that we have a hearing, if it's possible, on the 14th of December, if that's not.
I, this is Mike Levin. I agree with that.
Christmas time, but like I say, this is important. We would not have a public hearing. We would come back and have a discussion, although the public would be be available. I mean, they would be present, just not have a public hearing.
It would be a public meeting, not a public.
Thank you, thank you.
Jay Leipzig, again, it would be identical to our previous meeting.
Okay. And if, if, is there any objection to that? Hearing none. If staff could notify everybody that we would have a meeting on the 14th. Is there anything else that concerns anybody that we would like to have staff look into?
Yeah, Chair, Mr. Neese, Sean Pendley, planning staff, I just would request a little bit of additional clarification and direction for staff on the last item that we're considering for properties that are abutting, a conditional use permit for an application. Are we considering that, was there indication whether that means two properties, or two sides of a property, or what it was, what is surrounded? Is there a, a direction to that? Is it one side is okay, but two sides is?
This is Kelly Rast. I was looking at that, I think, you know, that no one personal property should be surrounded by more than 50% or two sides of the property. Because there's going to be a few instances, you know, I don't think it's going to come up a lot, but there are going to be some that someone is surrounded a little bit more than someone else.
Mr. Rast, what I was, what I was thinking is, is I'd like to do some research with the American Planning Association, or to see if there's other cases that out there that we might be able to look at that, or language that would pertain.
Your consultant can help you with that too, right? Consultant, consultant, I mean, he, he's like, Randy, is there any, is there any other questions you have regarding that?
No, this Mark.
I'm Mark, I mean, Mark.
I would, I would agree with that, you know, working towards that. And I don't want to tie your hands if you come up with better information than, than that.
This is Lindsey Grissette. I also would be curious if my fellow planning commission members have an opinion on the size of that property? Because to me, the smaller the property, the bigger impact of being made, you know, bordered, and, or do we not want to open that can of worms? I was just curious from, of your opinion.
Uh huh. Okay. Any other comments?
Just Kelly Rast. I, that is a good thought. I think the planners can, the staff can kind of look into that and see what they see as they delve into the other. But that is, yeah, the smaller the property, the more enclosed they can feel. So definitely a good recommendation.
Thank you. Is additional comments help?
Mark.
Mark Huggins, do we have a motion and a second on the table, on the floor?
We need to deal with that. There's been a, Sean Pendley, planning staff, I don't believe there's been a motion yet for, I think there's discussion regarding a continuance, but I will ask the.
I, I was referring to the, the motion
1,000 acres.
About the 1,000 acres. Well, we, we had the.
There was a mo, you're right.
1,000 acres, but.
Hey, Johns, the, the motion, I think, on the floor right now, when you went into discussion, it's the
The size.
The.
The enclosing of non-participating properties.
Project area, that's correct.
The project boundary, I believe, was what was on the table.
Project extent.
Correct.
I guess my question is, is should I call the question, call the vote on that, or should we wait for further discussion? Would that, Mark, would you affect that? Would that be affected with what you're concerned about?
Well, I think, I think we've addressed my concerns and staff's direction. It's just the question of if we have a motion and a second on the floor, do we need to deal with that?
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, 1,000 acres.
No. The boundary.
Boundaries, excuse me, I'm sorry, the boundaries.
I'm sorry, project extent, I'm sorry.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, Rick, Rick Lind with the legal department, just clarification, is the motion for, to remove the project extent cap, is that what the motion is?
I believe that was a motion by.
Yes, I believe I made a motion, if we needed to address it, and then staff recommended, because we had dropped it down to 1,000, that we just eliminate that whole part. And so we need to make a motion that we're going to eliminate the project extent recommendation. Is that correct?
I think, this is Sean Pendley, planning staff, I think the commission at this point, since we're doing additional research on these items, that, that motion can either be voted on as to whether you want to remove it or could be rescinded by the one who made the motion, if you don't want to remove it at this time.
Didn't you say basically what you want to do is do some research on that? So then what I would ask is that you rescind your motion, and we can deal on that at the next corral.
Mr. and staff's opinion, if we, Jay Leipzig, again, if we, if we could have some additional time on that, that would be helpful, because I, I don't know if, if, if it makes sense to eliminate it entirely, but we'd like to look at that.
Okay, Kelly Rast, I totally agree with staff's recommendation, so I will rescind the motion.
Second withdrawn. Okay, any other discussions tonight? Go home here. Been an interesting time. Jay, do you have anything else?
Just the Commissioner Neese, so if the, if the, the motion then is, or if, if the, if the pleasure of the commission then is to have a next meeting on December 14th, 2021, at 5:45 PM in this, this room, 111 South Cherry in Olathe, Kansas.
Good.
Mr. Chairman, I would probably make a motion to that effect.
I have a motion to move the meeting to the 14th in this location.
Sure, Dave Johns' motion to amend the meeting to December 14th at this location, 111 Cherry, 5:45 PM.
I'd second. I'd second.
We have a motion to move the meeting to the fourteenth, and convene then. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any other business before the board? Jay, do you have anything?
No, sir. I do not have any other business.
Okay, I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight. It's been interesting and we'll see everybody on the fourteenth. It's interesting coming. Take care, bye. Oh, I guess I need a motion adjourned. All in favor?
Did you say who motioned, who seconded? I can't hear. Thank you.